Very well, thank you Mayor.
Good. Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular meeting of June 8th, 2020, of the Rochester City Council. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Here.
Bavacqua?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Heathley?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Okay, now we're gonna, everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome everybody on this beautiful night that we're inside on right now.
Thanks Stuart.
But such is how it goes, right? So I'm going to, before we start, I'm gonna read a brief statement, kinda talking about some of the things that went on, have been going on, so, but it will be brief. Okay, so, "These are difficult times for our country and our city. The combination of the COVID-19 virus and the senseless violence in our country has put us all on edge. First, I want to condemn the death of George Floyd. It was an terrible injustice and it never should have happened. I also want to say that we honor people's First Amendment's rights to protest and express their beliefs. The recent protests in Rochester were peaceful and I commend the protesters for their conduct. I also want to thank the men and women of the Rochester Police Department and the Rochester Fire Department for ensuring the safety of the protesters and acting professionally in every way. Thanks to Chief Shattenhelm and Chief Sezlak for their leadership this weekend. Rochester is a safe and peaceful place to live. That is why we live and work here. The Rochester Police Department keeps us safe and I want to thank the men and women of our police force. I believe it is now time to move past the protest and to come together as a community. We want to build a society based on fairness for all and equal opportunity for all. Let us all be leaders to work to achieve a better world and let us all be kind to each other. So God bless America and God bless Rochester." Okay? So now we're gonna move on to public comments. First, we have State Representative Mike Weber. Mike, welcome to our City Council.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Mayor and thank you Council members and, and thanks for the opportunity to provide a really brief legislative update on, on state issues and I know you have a busy agenda, so I'll keep it brief, but appreciate the leadership of Mayor Bixson and the entire council. These are certainly unprecedented times and obviously with the, you know, the protests and, and also with, with COVID-19, what we've been going through with the, with this virus, you know, just, you know, it's great to have good leadership in the city of Rochester, so I commend you on that. You know, at the state level, obviously, we're, we're seeing, you know, that, that the efforts of, of the last couple of months in terms of flattening the curve have worked and have paid off, obviously particularly Southeast Michigan was, was hardest hit in our state. We're seeing, you know, less depths, less, you know, our, our ability to have, you know, more open, you know, hospital, hospitalization capacity. And, you know, with that, we've seen a number of industries and businesses get back to work. I know today restaurants and bars are, are opening to back up at 50% capacity. Hair salons, which is not a, an issue for me, but, but I know for a lot of people is opening a, a week from today, being able to return our, our bottles and cans, things like that. That's gonna be next, next Monday, the, the 15th. And, and so, you know, as we're kinda getting back to normal in that regard, we do have to maintain, you know, all the CDC guidelines that have been talked about in terms of, you know, face coverings and, you know, social distancing and, and trying to, you know, keep this, you know, going as much as we possibly can, knowing that obviously there's more things open. We will have increased cases. It's just something that will, that will happen and hopefully, you know, we can attack that issue going forward. With regard to the state budget, that's really primarily been the focus of the legislature and the governor over the past few weeks. We had a revenue estimating conference in Midbay and the numbers were, were not unsurprising given the, you know, the fact that we closed down the state, that we closed down a lot of sectors of our economy. And so we have a couple of different issues. We've got a fiscal year that ends September 30th and we've got about $3 billion, a little over $3 billion shortfall in that. And that is obviously a more immediate challenge for us because, you know, we won't be able to make certain payments, obviously, the, the further it goes unless we start making some, some cuts there. And then the, the other issue that we've been working on and we expected to really work on in the month of June is the next fiscal year budget, which would begin October 1st. And we have another about $3 billion deficit in, in that in comparison to where we thought we would be. But, you know, it does look like there will be some, some additional federal money that will come the state's way. It could be in the form of two different ways or a combination. One is less restrictions on the current CARES Act money that is been allocated to the state, which has been roughly about $3.8 billion. Or an additional, another, you know, stimulus bill, if you will. The challenge for us and the governor's budget director has talked about that as well is we, we're probably not gonna know, know that definitively till after July 1st. By statute now, we are required to get a budget to the governor by July 1st and I think, you know, we're gonna work with the administration on that. If we did do a budget like that, obviously it'd probably have some pretty significant cuts in there to schools, to roads and infrastructure and, and a lot of other items. And, and I think, you know, we're certainly working through a budget like that as, as a worst-case scenario. But I think everybody feels as though, I know our speaker feels as though talking to some of the folks in the administration that there will be some sort of federal money coming, coming forward. So that's gonna be a big challenge for us. Obviously, we need to get the next fiscal year budget done before September 30th. And, and so, you know, it's not what, what it looked like in January when the, the economic picture was, was pretty rosy in comparison to what it is now. It, we thought we would possibly have a pretty easy state budget timeframe and obviously that's now being challenged a bit. And then lastly, I just wanted to update you on where we're at and, and really appreciate the help of the Rochester DDA on getting the message out on a bill that I'm working on, but then also a bill that Rep Anthony from Lansing's working on. We had a bill package dealing with the social, social drinking zones or social districts. And actually, former council member Benjo Venelli was able to testify via Zoom in our committee last week. The bill did receive a positive hearing and got a unanimous vote, bipartisan vote out of committee, as did Representative Anthony's bill with regard to liquor to go or kinda like cocktails to go, which 30-plus other states do at this point in time. We think both of these are, are good pieces of legislation in terms of, you know, kind of a shot in the arm to our small businesses, our restaurants, our bars, but also could start to attract people back down to, to our downtowns and different areas. We certainly recognize that it's not gonna be for everybody and, and we're trying to create as much flexibility as we can for folks like you on the City Council to ultimately make the decision with your small businesses downtown, whether you want to do a, a district like this or not. But I know City of Grand Rapids and, and the Muskegon area, a bunch of different areas are very interested in it. So those bills, we're hoping to get those to the governor's desk. And we've been working well with the governor and her administration on these by the end of June. So in, in theory, it could be something that communities look at over the summer and, and perhaps early in the summer if they want to get something going for, for this, this calendar year. But so with that, you know, people can always reach me via email, MichaelWeber@house.mi.gov or the phone number 5173731773. We're always happy to try to assist the best we can. We've had a lot of constituent outreach, as you can imagine, over the last few months. You know, comments and questions about different industries being open or not and then certainly working through a lot of unemployment issues that our, our friends and neighbors are having in, in the greater Rochester area, so.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any questions for Mr. Weber?
This one.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. That $3 billion shortfall, does that include any of the road funding that was proposed by the governor?
So the road, so the road funding, the, the bonding that she did is, is a separate issue from our, from our budget. The, the general fund dollars that we have earmarked from the 2015 road funding plan is part of the general fund and the general fund has been the hardest hit at, at $2 billion. That's, that's where we have a $2 billion deficit in that one. So possibly our road funding could, could be, could be hit in that regard, but it doesn't affect the, the bonded money that, that the governor did.
Okay. Another follow-up. How about, is it, is the general fund being affected though from the furlough of the employees? Or would it be, would it have been more financially responsible to keep them on instead of collecting unemployment and, and doing that?
So I think, you know, how it was discussed to the legislature is that that proposal saved us about $80 million. I think what the unemployment that, that they are getting on furlough is part of the, the PUA federal $600 a week and not necessarily drawing down the, the state fund in terms of the unemployment. And I know there's been several questions and comments about that. But just from a technical standpoint, that's, that's, it, it was supposed to save about $80 million to the state budget.
I thank you for explaining that because as you stated, there was a lot of questions and wanted the public just to have an answer. So thank you.
Councilmember Keith Lee?
Thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight, Representative Weber. I appreciate you taking the time and for your work on the cocktails to go and social drinking districts. I was wondering if you could give or speak briefly an update on the House Bill 5761 and 5810. I think I saw is that delaying summer taxes without incurring penalties or, or interest if you've been affected by the pandemic?
So yeah, so I may have to get, I may have to look up the bills a little bit more closely, but I, what I understand from one of the proposals that came up in the recent local government committee was looking at taking those taxes and I think they're due usually in the middle of September and it would, they would be due at the end of September. So it seemed like it was only a couple week difference, but I can, I can try to look those up and kinda see where they're at and, and exactly what they do. I, I've just read about them in, in the newspaper and that kinda thing. I, it, it's not something that's been before us yet on the floor.
Okay, thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Further questions? Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Hey, thank you. Everyone have a great meeting.
And now we have moved, next we move on to a report from Commissioner Coquandurfer. We're having a Rochester Hills City Council alumni meeting, it looks like, tonight. So welcome, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council and I, I hope you and your families are doing well and we're still hunkered down here and I apologize if you hear my four-year-old in the background at some point, but I appreciate the opportunity. I, I wanna first start off and say, I commend Mayor Dixon in his statement at the beginning of the meeting. I agree with that. That was very good. I'm very proud and grateful for the, the protesters being out there and also Rochester Police Force and your leadership. From a county standpoint, I know there's several bills going through the state legislature right now to, to put better practices in place for police officers in Michigan. I am proud to say that the Oakland County Sheriff's Department has been doing many of those best practices for a long time now. I have a lot of respect to them. And in particular, one of the requirements in the state legislature that I support is that when an officer does see something that's going on that's wrongful conduct, that they're required to intervene. And we do have that policy at the county. I was one of the first Republicans to co-sponsor a resolution supporting that. And so we'll continue doing anything we can to eliminate police brutality. I wanna turn to, to COVID-19. Obviously, you know what's been happening at the state level. I wanna talk about the county and what we can do. Most of our efforts have been what can we do to establish programs and help people through this very difficult time, both businesses and families alike. The centerpiece of that has been $219 million that Oakland County received from the federal government through the CARES Act. Spending $219 million is actually tougher than you'd think. I've been on county commission for several terms now. This is the busiest I have ever seen the county operate. Because even though this is from the federal government, there's still taxpayer dollars. It's not monopoly money. And so you still have to spend these in a responsible and effective manner. And so a lot of efforts have been going to that. One of the first things that we did is made sure that some of these dollars went back directly back into the pockets of taxpayers. And so we had several rounds of small business grants with a lot of applicants, a ton of demand. And I think we awarded well over, I wanna say well over $10 million worth to small businesses to just help them in addition to the federal and state monies that may be coming in. The next one, as particular relevance to, to you guys, is setting aside $35 million for cities, villages, and townships for COVID-related expenses. That was just done this past week. And so there's a committee that's still setting up all the details, how you can apply to this. Your city manager is all over it. Mr. Wing had already emailed me when he heard about this and we're working with them on, on those requirements. And also working with the OPC. Senior centers will be able to separately apply. I believe they're developing those applications right now. And so I'll continue working with Mr. Wing and the rest of you to try to get these reimbursements for those expenses that you've already incurred and expenses that you may see coming up. I imagine you'll have some of those expenses related to the election, particularly as more and more people are voting AV, you're gonna have more and more expenses from that. PPE expenses, there's gonna be a lot of that. And so I'll be working with you guys to make sure that you get some grants from that. And the other thing that I'm involved in is we've recently set aside $10 million for nonprofits. Some nonprofit organizations have record-high needs right now. I know Neighbor of Quik House, I'm working with them. I just talked with Blessings in a Backpack today. And so I sit on the three-member oversight committee and application just went out. We're working with the United Way to help administer that. And I believe they're already due at the end of this week. And so anything that you can do to help get the word out to those 501(c)(3) organizations who may have special COVID-19-related expenses, highly encourage them to visit the county's website and get more information on applying and I'm happy to help walk them through that process. And then the also, the other thing that the county did is we had toolkits for businesses who are reopening and it's, it's, it's cool. I mean, these kits have sort of no contact thermometers, they have PPE equipment, they have sanitizer equipment and we've been handing a lot, a lot of those out to businesses that are reopening and helping them get on their feet. And so it's a very busy time of the county. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. And we don't know exactly where all this is headed yet, but in terms from a budget perspective and the, the CARES Act money that I mentioned has to be spent by December. So it's certainly not a fix-all, but we're working through the program and happy to answer any questions that we have.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank, thank you, Adam, for joining us today and thanks for the great update. And congratulations on announcing your campaign to run again. So we have been talking in the last several meetings about well-deserved premium pay for our firefighters and police officers. And you mentioned some of the allocation of that money that's gonna go to towns and cities and everything to that sort. So as you're looking for ways to spend that money, we, that's, that's an area that we've spent it. It's money well-spent. We've mimicked the Oakland County sheriffs. In fact, we went a step further when they cut back because we felt our police and firefighters, the first responders needed that premium pay. So I'm hoping that as you are working with the other commissioners, that, that will be a, 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 a place where some of that money is earmarked. So, and then secondly, I know Christie had received those kits for Rochester businesses. I have three small businesses in Troy and I picked up those kits last Friday. They're pretty good and, and that, that was nicely done and, and well-organized and everything else like that. So I think that was a good use for small businesses and, and, and well-needed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I'll say, I'm glad you brought up the hazard pay. That's an important component of this. It's my understanding that you'll be able to apply for reimbursement of that hazard pay that's already gone out the door. One of the things to keep in mind and the wrinkle in all this, if the city has expenses that are reimbursable through FEMA, you have to apply through FEMA. And so I don't know all the details of that program, but I can get you in touch with people who do. And with FEMA funds, there's a 25% copay the city is normally responsible for, but the county will pay your 25%. We'll cover that copay. So you can also reply for expenses that are not FEMA-reimbursable. I don't wanna give you the wrong impression. But if it is FEMA-reimbursable, I highly advise you first apply to FEMA and then come to the county demonstrating that you've already applied through that program.
Our, our city manager and both chiefs talked to us about that at a previous meeting, so they're, they're, they're well on that, but appreciate any support you can give us for the city of Rochester.
You guys are good. I'm superfluous here. You're on top of it.
And we're, we're hoping for the best, but we're not spending it quite yet.
Yes. Wise man.
Any further questions for Commissioner Coquandurfer?
I, I do have one.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. And thanks, Commissioner, for joining us this evening. I, I was in a meeting the other day with Oakland County Executive Dave Coulter and he, he brought up that we, Oakland County would be receiving $300 million. So I'm not sure if that's in something, some other form, but he said that was from the CARES Act.
It, it may be something very recent. I am personally only aware of the $219 million now. He may be aware of something else coming down the pipe, but that's all I'm aware of right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything further? Thank you, Com, Commissioner. Good to see you. Take care, stay safe.
You too. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Take care. Okay, next is a consideration of the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 26th.
So moved.
Motioned by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion, Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda, which is the reopening advisory committee report. I think everybody got a copy of that. As one of the members of that, I, I think a, a lot of information, good information was gathered. We distributed it to a lot of the stakeholders, businesses, nonprofits around the city. And I, I think that was a pretty good start. Now we're kinda waiting on the state for a lot of, you know, the decisions and, and things, but I, I think that was a, a pretty good committee.
I'll make a motion to approve and then I don't know if we had any public comment, so.
Yeah, so I, I think, I don't think we, uh, city manager, do we, do we need to approve that? I don't think so, do we?
You don't, yeah. I was gonna say, you could just accept the report?
Okay. So a motion to accept the report?
No.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Discussion, discussion of the motion. It's okay. I, I just thought it was great to see the different representation, the different volunteers, the different aspects of our community and I thought at some point in time, we should think about, you know, I hate to exclude anybody, but some sort of recognition of the people that volunteered and helped out during this crisis. So it was a good representation of our community and just wanted to thank them.
And I see Frank Rewald is here. He was also on the committee. So thank you. Councilmember Peterson, you had another question?
Yes. Well, no, a comment to piggyback off of Nancy because we have had such a great, you know, collaboration with so many that I think this, with everything happening and if possibility of finding a way to bring back the, that, how we used to recognize the city members and volunteers, when they volunteer at lunch and dinner, I think, I don't, we can work out details later, but I think it's something we should put on the agenda for future, to recognize them.
Very good. Um, we don't have any old business table items?
Your Honor, we need to do a, a vote on that motion to receive that report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you and thank you to the city clerk for reminding me of that. Next on to legislative deliberation, outdoor dining and parklet resolution. Mr. City Manager, you wanna report on what's happened in the interim and what we're gonna talk about tonight?
Yeah, so this evening, we're gonna have Attorney Crotte basically talk about the resolution. As Councilmember recall, from two weeks ago, there was a general discussion, guidance given and my staff along with the city attorney in consultation with the DDA drafted and put input into the resolution that's gonna be discussed this evening. So Attorney Crotte will walk us through that and then Nick and myself are happy to add any final points and then here to answer questions as well.
City Attorney, welcome tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. So in the packet is a, is a proposed resolution. You know, it really shouldn't take that much time to go through it since it's hopefully reflective of what you decided two weeks ago. So what, what's before you is a general, you know, the usual wheretas, which talks about the, the pandemic and how it's, the city has deemed it to be important for restaurants to open in whatever fashion possible and as quickly as possible, reflecting that this would be a 2020 outdoor dining season situation only. In that, if City Council recalls, the, you know, it was never a, a discussion to avoid the underlying standards of outdoor dining, but just to get the approval process, which would, which is quite a lengthy process to get that to be done administratively so long as the, the applicants meet the indoor, excuse me, the outdoor dining standards. So the one difference between, or one change I would like to point out in the ordinance that's in the packet, excuse me, resolution, it, it referred to all existing outdoor dining permit holders. And once that went in, there was some additional discussion and it really, the decision was really, it doesn't, it shouldn't be limited to those, only those who have existing outdoor dining. So the way the resolution, the first be it resolved paragraph, I, I did tweak it in a uh, I, I did tweak it, uh, and the final version will reflect that if city council wishes is to say all food and drink establishments in existence as of the date of resolution will be able to operate outdoor dining, um, in accordance with, uh, these standards. So i, i, before it wasn't meant necessarily to exclude anybody, but the idea was uh, the people who are existing had have already been through the planning commission process at some point. Um, but considering this is a temporary, uh, the decision was to present one that would include all, um, uh, food and drink establishments. So the, the numbered paragraphs that proceed just go through and talk about, you know, the, the utilization of alleys if there's not sufficient space to expand on the street or sidewalk. Um, there's, there's never been an issue or question that these, uh, that establishments would comply with all liquor license, uh, control, commission requirements, city core requirements. Uh, if there's existing liquor operation, uh, liquor operations agreements that we have with many, uh, establishments that those would have to be complied with. Um, that, uh, that if there's parklets, if you remember, uh, Christie presented uh, the idea and the concept of the parklets that would be outside of, uh, some of the establishments. So we included, um, that language as paragraph, uh, four, that, uh, the establishments may utilize parklets if they're in front of the establishment. Um, so that's, uh, that was a change from the, uh, concept from before. Um, five just reiterates that they have to comply with all outdoor dining standards and administration will determine that that is, uh, in fact, the case. And then, uh, paragraph six goes through and says what's recorded for submittal from, uh, from an applicant, which is a plan, a proof of insurance, uh, license agreement, and an agreement indemnifying and wholly vicinity harmless. Those were the, uh, things that I, my notes showed to be important to city council when we talked last, uh, Monday, or two Mondays ago. And then, uh, the next, uh, result just, uh, kind of goes through the, you have to meet social distance guidelines. Obviously, tho, those are still in place. Um, and configurations of, uh, you know, six feet, clear peda, pedestrian walking paths, et cetera, uh, temporary signage, um, hand sanitizing, uh, trash receptacles, just the things that you would expect, uh, that a restaurant would do in light of the, uh, the, the virus. Um, so the filing, this is all, uh, would be administratively reviewed. Um, the one thing that, uh, we would clarify tonight would be, you know, we talk about eating and, and, or food and drink establishments, but, uh, what we would like to add, what's not in front of you is, is a clarification that, uh, alcohol service would be permitted, uh, on the public property for those outdoor dining areas so long as they meet, uh, liquor license, uh, approval process. So that didn't specifically, that was the intent, but it, we would add, uh, just to clarify language in that. So I, I hope it, uh, captures the intent, uh, from two weeks ago. Uh, and this would put it into, uh, uh, paper form. And, uh, I'm here for any questions and I'll, uh, Nick and Christie are as well.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Uh, thanks Attorney Crotte. Um, I know, um, you referred, but, um, I, we were advised that may, uh, uh, M.DOT didn't allow it on Main Street. Uh, it's in the resolution. Um, in terms of the parklets, I know that Christie has had a couple of meetings with the DDA and o, and other committees. Have we identified, uh, planned locations for some of those parklets? And now that we can't put them on Main Street, I know we were looking at side streets and other things, so just some clarification on that. And then, um, I did call Nick earlier today. I know it refers to the outdoor dining season and I know we brought that up at the last city council meeting. I'm told that was the, it, the outdoor dining season ends the week before Halloween. I just wanted to clarify that that's, that is it.
Stuart. Mayor, Mayor Vixen.
Yes.
Did want to let you know that we do have one, um, public comment on this item. It's from a Rochester Hills resident, Thomas Yazbeck, um, in support of use of the parklets. Um, in his words, he believes the, will help local businesses stay afloat and provide safer environment for pedestrians and patrons. And he would also like to see implementation on a more permanent recurring basis going forward too.
Okay, is that the phone one that raised their hand?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
Cause I see a, a phone that.
This was an email we got earlier today.
Okay.
He had a phone number on there as well.
Yeah, I think they're two separate, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I think Christie is going to jump on the, uh, the parklet issue.
Sure, um, so we have not identified locations. We have a list of ones that we would like to, but now we're focusing in on our budget and the restaurant platforms first. See how many of those are requested and what we can afford. And then if there's money that's left over, then we would move on with parklets. Of course, again, nothing on Main Street, it would either be side streets, walnut, that kind of thing. So still on our radar, but we want to take care of the restaurants first.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Christie, what is our estimated budget? I mean, I know it's a great opportunity, um, what, I mean, obviously you're looking at, like you said, most likely restaurants, uh, to accommodate first, what is our budget?
Sure, so, yep, so, um, when, at our last meeting last Wednesday, um, our estimates have come in for the, uh, platform, which is nine by eighteen, which is essentially the size of a parking space, so it's basically for the deck and the rail, no frills, no plants, anything like that. They're about eight thousand apiece. And so right now we're doing, I've been talking individually with the restaurants because we did an online survey asking restaurants if they were interested and if they'd like one or two platforms. Now I've gone back and said, okay, if you're on Main Street, we have to do something different. But if you're off Main Street, I wanted to confirm if you wanted one or two. As of right now, I think we're probably going to end up with requests for ten, which would, um, take us up to eighty thousand dollars. So, uh, DDA board is going to see these numbers, they know about the eight thousand, they'll see the total number on, uh, Wednesday night, so two nights from tonight, and, uh, decide if that is something that they will pursue. I have a good feeling about it, that number, the eight thousand was thrown out and the possible, you know, ten parklets and, or ten decks, and everyone seemed to think that that was reasonable. So we'll have that discussion with DDA on Wednesday night.
That's great, as a follow-up, um, if these are temporary but could become permanent eventually or the opportunity for that, are these going to be constructed so they're reassembleable? Um, or is this just a one-time construction? We'd have to then spend another eight grand to build, or can we?
They are reconstructable and so basically the idea is all we have to do is take the rail off and then they're stackable. And the way that they're going to be built is they actually can be, um, put onto a flatbed with a forklift, just like we have, um, on our wash nut over at the farmer's market lot. You can pick it up with a forklift and move it around, same idea with this, that we would actually be able to stack them. So they would be able to be reused again.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
Further questions? Council, uh, Mayor Proten Bavacqua.
Yeah, um, you, you know, we've been trying to put this together for a couple of weeks now. Um, did we get an opportunity to, uh, to put those out for three bid, um, for the, uh, the platforms?
We did not, uh, we talked about it at DDA and we felt that with the, that while that usually is something that we try to do because of the timeline that we're working on right now, that we did not do that. Um, I will tell you that many of the materials and, uh, labor that's going into it is being donated through, um, Bob Bloomingdale and through Dilmond and Upton. Um, so the board, we had this conversation on Wednesday night and the board felt comfortable with our direction so far. So, uh, so the answer is no, but we feel comfortable with the numbers that we have.
Okay, I, I always would prefer us to see, uh, to see multiple bids, um, but, uh, understanding the circumstances.
Uh, Councilmember Salvia.
Yes, sorry for the interruption and sorry if this was already discussed while I was out. But in reading through the packet, it looks like if, let's say if you're a restaurant on Main Street and you just want to be able to put some additional tables out front. Um, it looked, and from what I read, you might be able to use some of the parking that's on Main Street for pedestrians to meet the ADA compliance. Am I understanding that correctly that's being proposed?
That'd be a question for Nick, I don't.
I can, I can answer on that, so, um, this is Nick Banda, uh, the, to Councilwoman Salvia's questions directly. They, they played a game where you, or I'm going to call it that, M.DOT kind of changed stream on us here and said you could put a platform out in the road, but it has to stay six feet away from the parking where the cars are, so that gives you three feet to walk around and back onto the sidewalk, which makes virtually no sense whatsoever. Uh, then they said if you want to put any additional dining outside, they still want to see them like we do presently. But we used to have to go for our outdoor dining at Main Street. We had, you know, the planning commission did the site plan and then we sent it to the M.DOT for a, um, a review. We, we're going to do that administratively, just shoot it up to states and say, here, it's got five feet clearance. If somebody wants extra seats up against their building, most likely. Um, Councilwoman Peterson and Christie and I have actually had pictures taken that there might be some opportunities, if you can picture Giorgio's Outdoor Dining, he went, it's wider there. So he went between the trees and the building, put a spot. Uh, and maybe there's a couple of other opportunities for that on Main Street, but still got to go through M.DOT. They're not saying how long it would take to redo it, so I don't anticipate us doing that. It's going to be a waste of money to put a three-foot aisle in a parking space, give up the space just to get around a planter, to get back on the sidewalk. We said that, no thanks, yeah, but a good question.
And, and that was my thought as well, so thank you for clarifying that. And, you know, I did have a conversation with Chomp over the weekend and, you know, his ask was, I just want to be able to put some more tables out front. I mean, he's in pretty good position, but I, I don't know how that works with the ADA compliance.
Right, it's a, it's a challenge.
Okay.
Further comments? Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I want to, um, as the liaison sitting on, uh, the DDA, I wanted to, you know, give them a shout-out for the in-depth discussion that they have had, um, in the effort to bring the business owners downtown, uh, to the forefront and help them start succeeding, so we don't lose them. Um, it's the amount of, you know, it's been over a half a million dollars already, um, being, you know, proposed to, uh, take care of the debt and that, you know, was all from the business owners. So I think they've gone above and beyond to do this. Um, as, uh, Deputy City Manager Nick Banda stated, I did take a lot of photos of downtown, um, through the alleys and on Main Street. Um, and we have a lot of opportunities down there to actually put dining out. Um, and also in the alleys where there's not dumpsters and where everything is, you're not actually in the alleyway. So I know they're going to be working on that and I, I, I really appreciate everyone's comments and want everyone to know that we don't have any more time to waste on this here. We have to get them fully functioning, so we don't lose our downtown, thank you.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I, I wanted to maybe piggyback off Nancy's comments, um, and just to clarify, so we're not recommending directing any pedestrian flow into the parking space, like say on Main Street, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it was a short question, Councilmember Sage. Uh, further questions? I think we have a outside person who is in the phone, so I'm going to unmute them and let them ask a question. So the person with the phone number last eight seven oh, you are now available to talk.
Hi, this is actually Tom, the guy that emailed in, I just was worried that you guys wouldn't read my email.
Aww.
Well, we take, we, we take care of your email, you, you live in Rochester Hills, we still want to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, well, you, you've already read my, um, email. Um, I do live in Rochester Hills, but I spend a lot of time in downtown Rochester. And, um, I act, I actually am very, um, happy that the city's going through with, um, uh, extending the outdoor dining space. And, you know, it, it's something that I would like to experience myself.
Okay, thank you for calling in, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Councilmember, uh, Peterson, then Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes, um, so Mayor, are we going to, uh, make a motion to accept the resolution?
I think, uh, that's probably what we're looking for, yes.
I would like to do that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Salvia, comment, Councilmember Albrecht.
No, I, I had my hand up, that's why I was going to make a motion, so that, that, I'm glad it's out there.
Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Keithley.
Do we need to include the additional suggestions that, uh, the, uh, Mr. Crotte suggested? There were a couple of things that might have gotten left out in the resolution that we've been presented.
I made the motion based on what, um, Attorney Crotte had stated.
Attorney Crotte, is that good?
A, absolutely, that's, that's how I understood it and that's what the final version will be reflected.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, the role please. You're muted, I think.
Yes, sorry about that, Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keithley.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Very good, we will look forward to our Wednesday DDA meeting to move this further along, so thank you to the council. Next we have a grant opportunity, uh, next we have the DPW campus renovation update and we have Sandy and we also have, I guess, the rewalls and backup if we need them.
Yes, hi, Council, as you know, it's been three months actually since we've been back to do our monthly update on the status of the DPW campus renovation project. And I have my slideshow, so fair enough, I'm going to share my screen here, so everyone can, um, all right.
There you go.
You got it. Um, you actually can see that one.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, I didn't see March first, I go, man, I could have sworn we were a lot further on than that.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the, uh, the campus, as you'll recall, back in March, last time I was on, we had basically our shell of a building, we had the beginnings of a roof and so forth. And since construction has resumed, we now have our signature green roof nearly complete. The brick facade is nearly complete, our entryway brickwork was just about done today. They're getting ready to put in our sidewalks this week. And, um, as you can see, here's the side view and then looking way down from the community garden, you can see the back of our building, we have our HVAC units installed. We're just finishing up our screening walls right now for our plant transformer and our generator areas. And they're also beginning to cut the grays on that side to prepare it for paving. Back in March, this was the inside of our building, we actually had our concrete floors and our conduits put in. Since then, we have a lot of walls, walls, plumbing, and in our reception area, we're starting to see the drywall go up, I believe in a few other areas, they've even got some more drywall, kind of see here on a few of our rooms as well. So it's, it's wonderful to see everything start taking shape. There's insulation in our walls now, plumbing, electrical and so forth. So again, um, the building is definitely starting to take place. Back in March, our truck wash bay got stopped right in the middle of a wall. Coming back, they have busted it out, look at that, we have an entire truck wash bay now, they've been installing some of the utilities. There's a fully functional roof on it and, um, probably within the next two to three weeks, they'll be punching into that other garage wall to begin the underground utilities to connect the two structures together. In March, this was our fuel station, we had a lot of work to go. And would you believe, this is our station now. Actually having a fully fuel station, we have a few punchless items that Fire Chief has been so kind to assist us with, such as, uh, signing and instructions and so forth that we need around the, um, canopy area. But everyone is using both of our tanks and as you can see, we even have our new tank on there. So our gasoline tank now matches our diesel, we have a beautiful canopy and, um, some LED lights, so it's certainly remarkable at night so that you can, uh, easily get your fuel if you're coming in late. So that, that has been quite the difference to see that over the last couple of months take shape and actually get to, um, near completion with the exception of a few punchless items. Within our campus, we did have a utility allowance that allowed us to put in higher power poles and have our wires moved up higher. This will allow for better clearance with our salt trucks as well as the vehicles who deliver our salt to us. That twenty thousand dollar allowance that we had, it actually with DTE wound up costing us just over twenty-two thousand dollars. And as you can see, that site work was taking place today. And this week, they've, um, today, they just finished the last of the power poles, putting them up and moving the high electric wires, the high-power wires. We still have to get the cable wires moved, but you can at least see where they're putting these, these poles in. The great news is, DTE's project manager, um, after inspecting the old poles, found that they were no longer in compliance and DTE agreed to cover the entire cost of the expense and is refunding us all of our money. So that is a fabulous, um, savings for us to get. So that is a fabulous, um, savings for us to get unexpectedly. And, um, like I said, a few more weeks, I think, to move our cable wires. But we don't expect there to be any cost with that. But again, I, I can't finalize that until after we've, um, finished talking to them because we do have to have the cable run down to our building just as redundancy. So that our servers and so forth, um, still have capabilities if we were to lose our, our fiber connections. Within our contingency fund, we have a $200,000 contingency fund. And over the last few months, we have had a few, um, extra changes. One of the things to note is I did let you know in March that we had anticipated the gate relocation being taken to the water treatment plant, the former wastewater plant, as being around $11,000. And that actually ultimately only cost $3,120. Uh, the cost was less. We were able to share some of the DPW aspects of having our staff help move some of those items and, um, and do some of the grading over at the plant as well. We had a few changes with our electrical and our roof ladder to allow for better access up to our HVAC units. We felt that these, these changes, although a slight increase in our costs would actually help maintain our building and give better access to things that we would need in the future up on that ceiling. In addition, as we started looking at the vapor, the vapor barriers, the insulation was upgraded to provide better efficiency than what was originally projected. We felt for the $385 change order, it was going to save us with our utilities, especially, um, in the winter time. One of the other costs, um, that we've incurred were the overhead door changes. We have four new bay doors being proposed. And you'll see in this picture, the, the door in the middle, that's actually our brand new door that was installed. Originally, it had a different configuration of the windows. And as we were looking at everything, we thought, well, we would like our campus to really look, um, conforming and together. And, and hence why we actually allowed for them to order the doors so that they all match. So at least, um, the south and north garages will have the contiguous flow between them in terms of, um, the visual, as well as how the doors operate and that they're all on the same, the same system. Last but not least was, um, in our south garage, we had the overhead tube heaters and the ventilation in there relocated. Once we put the new doors in, we ordered the hoist and we looked at where they would go. We felt it a pertinent change because our mechanic will be located in this building and he will be working on the larger vehicles that we have, uh, more room for him with those vehicles. And we also have a better, more adequate ventilation system so that large fans can be turned on. And originally, although that was specked in our plans, we did not include some of the, the roof um, fans that we now have added to our project as well. And those are due to be installed, although the tube heaters have in fact, um, been relocated already. Couple of times we've talked about, um, our estimated expenses and that as we began to work on the east side of our site, we knew we would have some more soil disposal costs, which have always been estimated around $25,000. DPW continues to work with our contractor to see if there's any way we can assist with, um, saving on our fuel station. We did have to haul some soil, but, um, our superintendent was able to work with the trucking company and we saved the cost of them picking up the dirt and DPW instead loaded the trucks ourselves. So it had a very significant cost savings. It looks like that dirt will only be at $1,500 at this point. And such as with our administration building, the minute they dug down to cut the grade, we found more foundations. So as you can see, here's, um, one of the pieces that they pulled out. We're estimating another $5,000 in order to break up that portion of the concrete and dispose of that concrete. We, we did our best and worked with them to, um, mitigate how much concrete we had to remove from that area. But nonetheless, it was still, um, a subsequent, substantial $5,000 cost to get these out of there. So altogether, our estimated expenses are at $31,500.
Well, the good, the good news is it wasn't, uh, Indian burial grounds like we had when we did the, uh, means.
Yeah, exactly.
A program.
All right, get back there. So on our schedule, as you know, our pandemic delay, we had no construction allowed for just over six weeks from March 24th till May 7th. Our previously, uh, previously, our occupancy was projected at early August. It's now currently only early September. We are only behind schedule approximately four weeks. Our contractor Frank Rewald and Sons, as well as our engineers AEW, have worked tirelessly to schedule and coordinate the contractors, getting everybody in and out swiftly, having them work at the same time while maintaining, um, the CDC recommendations so that everything could get done, um, as efficiently as possible. So they've already made up two weeks of ground and we're hoping without any further delays, we will still be in our building hopefully around Labor Day, which is great news. Um, because Halloween doesn't sound near as appealing when we're in the middle of leaf seizing. Our, our budget, as you know, from the $200,000, why the expenses altogether, so far we've incurred known expenses of $140,255. The estimated expenses that $31,500. We still have our cost savings at $41,744, which is the, um, the lockers that we saved money on. And, um, and.
Door for the salt.
Yes, thank you. The salt burn door. Oh, I forgot. So altogether, our balance, our net total is still almost $70,000. And we're believing that we're still going to be able to complete this project completely on budget, if not under budget. Um, in doing our little fence relocation up along the creek. You can see the other day, we had wonderful visitors. Our superintendent, um, caught the picture of these animals up there as well, saying hi. So again, a- as always, we, we thank the council for this wonderful renovation. It, it just feels like every minute we're getting closer and closer to being in there. And it's just, uh, it's amazing to see all the coordination and the things that are happening around our campus right now. So although we are a little bit behind schedule, we are still on budget. So that's the best news there is.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions for Sandy?
No, comes out.
Yeah, it's awesome. Let's.
Better be, better be behind schedule than off of budget.
Absolutely.
Something like that. Okay, thank you for that report. Okay, next we have a grant opportunity discussion for 303 East University, uh, with the Rewald Company. Uh, Mr. City Manager, did you want to, uh?
Yeah, Nick, Nick and I will, uh, just provide a, a brief update and then are happy to answer questions tonight. And I know Frank and, uh, uh, Jason are also, uh, on tonight's Zoom call as well. So, so similar to, to, to the past, uh, we had a similar state, state grant opportunity. Um, and we, instead of, uh, bouncing through the whole process, we went right to council to, for the conceptual, to kinda see if, you know, if there's a, an appetite. And so we're taking the similar, uh, path and Nick can kinda go in and explain to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for explaining. So we, um, in January, um, Michelle Lacoue from the Eagle Division of the State contacted me and based on our performance on the Rewald Headquarters, remember council, then we got a $1 million grant that the city was awarded. And then the city took out a $1 million loan backed by Rewald and Sons Project as a brownfield with personal guarantees, et cetera. That went so well and so efficient that the state was impressed. They talked to Michelle and she said, with a limited pool and many applicants, they're gonna give us a shot at another $1 million cleanup for property contiguous to that property, which is the elevator site. Much of the same contaminants have worked their way to that site. Um, and she said, we would need a letter of commitment that the city would be interested in having a placeholder play with the state for the million dollar. Because otherwise, others want that million dollars and they have not replenished that pot at this point. Mr. Rewald, um, put that, the elevator site, and I'll let Frank talk about that in a minute. Um, he put that under contract. The grant again is through the city. This is not a loan. This is a grant that would assist in the cleanup of that property. And there's been a couple of phase ones and twos done on that property. So we know it's significantly dirty. Um, I told Mr. Rewald when he was informed of that opportunity that much like we did with his office board, as, uh, Manager Wayne just pointed out, we would wanna follow the same process. That first step is that I told them, we couldn't write a letter, I told Michelle, we couldn't write a letter to the state and to my city council, looked at at least a concept plan to get a feeling whether they're interested or not, as Mr. Wayne said, in potentially looking at that grant. Tonight, also asking for is a consensus to submit a letter saying, please put a placeholder for the million dollars. We have to go through our, in this case, would be special projects due to the fact that the property's on industrial B1. And then through the planning commission, then the city council, through the brownfield authority, et cetera. And Mr. Rewald's aware of that. The Eagle folks are aware of that. But our first step would be, okay, administration, send a letter on behalf of city council saying, please give us a placeholder for this money. If we can't work it out, they would understand that. So with that, Mr. Rewald and Jason are here tonight. And just to give you a quick preview, I promised Frank that we wouldn't hold him to that rendering. He'll talk about that. We just wanted you to see, it, was it a industrial plan? Was it a office residential? And Frank, you're like, you're like on that, no.
All right, Mr. Frank Rewald, welcome.
Hello, everybody. Uh, I think maybe Scott, our architect is on board. Maybe you can walk them through that real quickly, Scott. And again, I would just echo what Nick said. You know, the key things here are, this is a grant. It's highly sought after by everybody else in the state. It's pretty unusual that they would give two to the same city. And the only reason they're considering that is the success we had on the last project, as Nick mentioned. So we either get in line and get this, or we're gonna lose it. And quite frankly, without that grant, that property doesn't make sense to do anything with. Um, so I think it's a golden opportunity for us. I would also just wanna echo what Nick said, so we don't get confused. This, this rendering is real nice that Scott did, but it probably won't be what we do because we don't even exactly know who our tenant is gonna be. Although I am working with someone that I would like to get in the city desperately because they'd be an awesome addition, office building, a lot of younger people. Uh, I don't wanna mention their name now, but they were pretty well locked in until the, um, C19 hit. Now they've kinda pumped the brakes. But either way, we think it's a great opportunity to move ahead with this grant and get that site cleaned up, which is, is step number one.
Very good. Mr. Reynolds, welcome.
Uh, welcome. Thank you very much, uh, the council. Uh, my name is Scott Reynolds. I'm with Auger Klein Adler Architects, actually a tenant in the, uh, Frank Rewald Headquarters. We, uh, moved to Rochester because of the Frank Rewald Headquarters project. Um, so as Frank mentioned, you know, it's a very attractive, uh, initiative to, to bring, um, new businesses into downtown. So with that, let me, uh, share my screen if I have permission to do so.
Sounds like a plan.
Scott, you're looking pretty dapper tonight, by the way. I'm impressed.
I try on a Monday night sometimes. So in, uh, before you tonight, um, we put together some conceptual renderings. And, and this is a very, very high level idea of what could go on, um, the 303 East University parcel. Um, you know, we were starting to take a look at some elevations and renderings. Obviously something that would be consistent with the master plan of downtown Rochester. Um, as you guys are aware, the, um, site is on the corner of University and Water Street here labeled just north, uh, slightly northeast of the, uh, Rewald Headquarters and directly north of the Mills Building. Uh, so we feel like there's a great opportunity here, not only to, uh, clean up a site. And that's what Frank is mentioning, the, um, Eagle, um, from the state of Michigan. They have initiative called the Clean Michigan Initiative, um, which is CMI, which is a grant program that's directed towards remediating sites and improving them. Um, and we do know that there'd be some improvements required on this site just as we go along between soils that are contaminated from the history of the site. Um, but this is a high level idea of what could happen here. We're looking at a, um, building on the corner of University and Water Street. There could be a really nice, uh, pedestrian improvement there in the corner. Um, it could all be self, uh, parked and contained. Um, so these are all kind of early concepts and renderings and, and plans. But we, um, would look to kinda proceed, uh, with initiative from you guys to proceed to Eagle to apply for the grant. And then therefore, um, work on the additional steps towards going towards site plan approval, working with the city and all of the other details, just like we did with the Frank Rewald Headquarters.
Very good. So I, I think, as they said, what we're looking for tonight is, you know, they, they still have to go through planning commission. They still have to go to council. They still have to, you know, go through the whole process. They're just looking for a letter tonight to saying that we're, in theory, interested in the project. Is that correct, Nick?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Um.
There would also be the brownfield as well, Mayor.
The brownfield, correct.
So I raise my hand.
Uh, Councilmember Salvia, uh, Scott, you might wanna.
Stop sharing?
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay.
I was trying to raise my hand, but I think I just gave you applause. I, I'm not really sure.
There you go. Got your hand raised.
Right. Um, so my question is to clarify the commitment, what is being asked of council tonight. So really, my understanding is we are not committing to a design. We're not committing to any zoning change. We're not committing to a special project. We're committing basically to a brownfield, which basically has tax abatements from the city's standpoint.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay, council, is that it? Councilmember Salvia? Councilmember Keith Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for joining us, Mr. Rewald. It's great to see you again. I think that getting funding to clean up contaminated, a contaminated site makes real, a lot of sense. I think the conceptual drawings look really cool. Uh, before expressing interest in this project, though, I think our residents would have a lot of questions about the historic elevator barn and if there are any plans, uh, for that or potential to move it to a different location. And if you could address that, please.
Mr. Rewald?
Nick, do you wanna comment on that? Cause I think you wanted it for your backyard. Did you not?
I, I did, I did, but I'm on a really small lot. But, um, I appreciate the question. And we've had a, a gentleman named Mark Stitz, who's a barn mover and a disassembler. And about three years ago, when Mr. Salomi and Mr. Alito were going through the planning commission for a similar project, it was, it was a multi, multi-family building. We had Mr. Stitz come in and look at what it would take. And he said, you can firm with Mr. Lawrence, who wants the barn, that if you just push that thing, it's gonna fall over. So they would disassemble the barn. We would put it into storage. We would look to raise money, um, work with the developer and try to get a donor, whatever we work out, and then reassemble it. And we looked at five different places in town about three years ago. And we've kinda focused on the area in the park where the Kiwanis Shelter is. The Kiwanis Shelter is in dire need of completing, fixing. So we have a, a picture in our off, in our, um, conference room next door to here that shows the barn in its glory. It was a white barn. I did not know this, but the status in the barn community was, a red barn was for commoners, a white barn was for elite barners. So that barn used to be white, actually. And we would reconstruct the barn and make it functional in the park that we can honor the, the barn or the elevator. We could put a plaque up and tell the story. We could actually use it for functions inside. So we would do that as a separate project because if, if it's, we're gonna go forward with this, we have to get it off the site before it falls down. So it would be disassembled and then rebuilt elsewhere. And then we'd again come to planning commission, city council for final approval and work with the community on that. We already did this once and we came to a consensus with a lot of the community folks that love the barn, the elevator, sorry, that in the park could be a great place to honor one. When you came in, you could see it and actually use it for different events. So, um, that, a plan in concrete and we'll work with council and planning commission on that also.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Frank, uh, for all the hard work and labor to bring this forward. Um, I'm 100% in favor of approving this tonight and making a motion to do so. Uh, I, I believe that we need to get the money while we can, uh, for these brownfields. And I do know with them making all those cuts, as we heard tonight, uh, having, uh, you be able to receive this here to take care of that is outstanding and, and actually deserved since it was your work prior that has allowed you to be offered this again. So it would be, um, um, in our very best interest to make a motion to, uh, take care of this tonight, to get that on the agenda and what, go through the rest of the steps.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Peterson? Is there support?
Or?
Support by Mayor Pro Tem Vavakwa. Discussion, Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Rewald. And Scott, uh, thank you for, uh, the opportunity here. So my only question is, um, the grant. We had, is there a contingency link to the concept that is submitted to get approval for the grant? So if we change the concept, if you guys change the concept, do we lose the?
So if we change the concept, if you guys change the concept, do we lose the grant?
No, the, the grant is essentially, we, we just need to get in line that there, there would actually be a potential project that would happen, similar to the Rewald headquarters. This is step one of probably 10 steps, including what we would go through with the city. So the project is gonna evolve as it develops.
Okay, thank you. Just, just two other comments I would make. Number one, there's no guarantee that we're gonna get this grant. It's, it's highly competitive right now and they've made cuts. And the other thing that Nick didn't, I don't think, mentioned is, uh, I've talked to Lawrence Smith. He's not interested in the barn. We are not, so we are gonna donate it to the city to do what they want. So how you, what you do with it or where you put it is up to you, but I would agree with Nick. Uh, I've been in that with Lawrence, walking in every nook and cranny. That's gonna be difficult to save or move, other than just disassembling. There's only a small piece of that, quite frankly, that's worth saving, in my opinion, just FYI. So I know the public will be out there and saying what, you know, they want to say, but the reality is, there's not much worth saving there, to be honest. And I, and I don't want to put words in, uh, the his, the history committee's mouths, but I've talked to them as well. And they've kind of come to that conclusion after walking through it as well. It's, it's, it's a tough sell to move that.
Right.
It was 10 years ago, too, when we painted it.
Yeah, and, and just, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, and, uh, just more of a comment. Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, I'm excited to see that there's, uh, something developing, uh, on this property. And, um, uh, you know, I understand that, that I'm not gonna get too hung up on the rendering at this point, but, uh, I could see a little pushback in terms of the style of, uh, of that building. Um, so it'll be, uh, i- if, if this moves forward, I'd be interested to see, uh, how, how it, how it changes throughout the process. So, thanks.
Very good. And I, I would ju, I, I agree. I think it's a good idea to move forward. I will say, having been on the council when, um, you know, the topic of the elevator moving, um, the, the, you know, we need to have a plan for that, because there will be, there will be blowback on that. So we just all need to be aware. I mean, I understand, you, you know, we understand that maybe there's not much, you know, it's, it's in a lot of, the building's in a lot of trouble, but people see that as one of the key, um, you know, monuments of, of the city of Rochester. So we just have to be aware that, that is, that is out there. Anything further?
Just one quick thing. Wasn't that barn actually somewhere else and it was moved there?
Hmm, I don't know. I think that's been there since 1959.
All right, I think there was something, there was something said that it was from somewhere else. Okay.
There may be partial portions of it. There, there's the, it's, the, the historical portion is much smaller than anybody really thinks.
Right, okay. All right, that's what I thought.
Okay, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you and good luck, uh, good luck with the process.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. One little plug I have to throw in. I know of a good hotel restaurant that's now open on the beautiful river downtown, if you need drinks or food. Just saying. Thank you.
Can't wait.
All right, thank you. Next is, uh, receive report from the various boards and commissions. A report from the planning commission, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so we, uh, one of the first things we did was appoint a new planning commissioner, uh, Sarah King. And, um, uh, it's good to have, uh, another woman on the, uh, on the planning commission. It was a bit of a boys' club there, and now we're, uh, we're starting to get some women, uh, on, on the commission, so it's nice. Um, we, uh, the next thing we did was we looked at, uh, changes to, uh, Dr. Atala's, um, property, um, at, uh, 134 West University. Um, he's looking to do a facade renovation and, um, and, and add some, uh, some apartments in, uh, in that location. So, um, that'll be coming back to planning commission again as it develops. Um, uh, one big thing that we looked at was a discussion that we had regarding a four-story, uh, 40-unit, um, apartment complex, uh, multi-family project at, uh, 210 Diversion, which is kind of, uh, by the old cement factory. And, um, had a lot of, uh, feedback from the planning commissioners in terms of, uh, concerns. Uh, um, a lot of people liking the design, um, of, other, um, feedback that, uh, that I think the, uh, developer, uh, took to heart. So, um, we'll see what happens with that as, as they continue to come in front of us. Um, and then the other thing we did was we talked about, uh, with the, with the DDA about, uh, the outdoor dining in the parklets and that sort of thing, um, which we already, uh, completed here today. Um, and we're supposed to do infill development discussions, continue those, but I think we were already well into our meeting at that point, so we just, uh, decided to put that on a future agenda. And that was it.
Council member Albright.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua, what, what was the name of the new, uh, new, uh, chairman of the planning commission? I didn't catch that.
Oh.
No, it was just.
It was a new member, S- uh, Sarah King. We, we appointed a new member.
Yeah, I was looking at the last list we had at the last meeting. I didn't see her on there. Okay, great, thanks. Yeah.
Okay, next we're on to the facilities committee. Um, council member Salvia.
I'll, I'll, uh, I can give you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, so, um, one of the things we discussed was, uh, an update on the, um, uh, facilities asset management plan that we're having put together by Amoresco. It sounds like that's gonna be, uh, getting to us, uh, early July. And, um, excited to see that, to see, um, you know, what we're looking at in terms of future expenses and how, and, and making a plan as to how we're gonna, how we're gonna manage those in the future, so. Um, we also had a discussion about whether we were gonna move forward with at least requesting or sending out the RFP for the up, up, updates to the, uh, and, and changes to the, uh, to community house. Um, there was some, uh, spirited discussion as to whether we should wait until we get any additional information that may come from the facilities asset management plan, which includes an assessment of the, uh, uh, community house or whether we should send out the RFP. In the end, we landed on, l- let's, let's wait the month and then, uh, and then send out the RFP. So, uh, so that's where we stand right now.
Very good. Uh, next is a report from the tree committee, uh, Chairman Albright.
Well, tha- thank you, Mayor Dixon. Um, this has been a great committee. And, um, uh, when we started, uh, Mayor, you had given us a, um, really a, a goal to look at the ordinance, mostly in regards to landmark trees and everything else like that. We took it upon ourselves to sort of expand our scope, uh, and we focused on that reviewing and revising the existing tree ordinance, looking at the commercial development and home builder provisions of the tree ordinance. And you'll see that in a couple of weeks. We've, we've done a lot of work. This committee is made up of, 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 of five members, but the, the two that are not on the agenda are the two hardest working people, which is Attorney Croft and, and, and Nick Banda. Uh, those two have taken us through page by page, line by line, word by word of, of the ordinance of the tree ordinance. And we've looked at it, um, each and every week, and, and we will be presenting that to you, uh, at, at the next council meeting. We've also had on the committee, um, good representation, Melissa Weiss, who you've, you've met, one of the residents. She's come to our city council meetings, very passionate about our tree canopy. And then, uh, Bill Thomas, who sort of represents sort of the home builders, architects. So we've got that balance of, of homeowner rights and also preserving trees. So we expanded our goals, which you'll be hearing about, and hopefully we will continue this tree committee beyond our report, uh, uh, in the next council meeting. And we would like to always have, uh, uh, an annual tree report to include the tree canopy coverage presented to city council annually. We are a tree city. We've been a tree city for six years. We want to be a tree city for the next 60 years. And then we also want to use the, now about $40,000 in our tree fund to reinvest the trees for the future. What we do today will, will ensure that the canopy looks better than it is today in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So, um, I look forward to presenting on behalf of, uh, of this tree committing again, saluting both, uh, Attorney Croft and, 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 uh, Assistant City Manager Banda on the work they've done. Uh, and we look forward to, uh, continuing that work after, hopefully this ordinance is, uh, reviewed and passed. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Council member Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the report, uh, Council Member Albright. Um, I'm actually intrigued by your, your comment there about an annual review and whether this could become more of a permanent, uh, function within, um, even our body. Um, does our neighboring municipality, who's been a tree city, uh, USA recipient for more years than we have, do they do a, do they do a similar, uh, function like that annually?
Uh, I'll, I'll defer to Nick, but I know when we talked about that, you know, keeping up with Big Brother next door, they have a larger budget, more people focused on this. But we, we feel, and, and I, I hope I speak for everybody on the committee, that, you know, city council's been dealing with some of these landmark trees over the last year, two years. And that's not the true story. We do so much in this city for our tree canopy and, and protecting homeowner rights and also preserving our canopy, that we want to tell that story. We want to show what the canopy is now, what it's gonna be like in the future, how we're allocating those money. So show, show the good that we do, that the city has been doing, that we just have not been able to promulgate, uh, over the last year.
Great.
And I, I can add to Mike that oddly enough, and I, kudos to Rochester Hills, but they don't protect any tree on, under an acre, um, on private property. So there, a lot of their good work has been right of waste, which they have a lot of, obviously, in their parks, et cetera. But we are much more conservative in protecting our overall sea tree, tree canopy by our ordinance than them or anybody else around here. Just a lot of them have taken, if you're planted before 1970, you don't have to, we're not gonna protect the trees. Um, they really focused on public plans, and I give them kudos for that, but we have, we're smaller, obviously, but we really made it a statement. And I agree with Councilman Albright, we, we just haven't sung our praises, because we just do our job, but that's gonna change.
Well, great. I, 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 I hope that we do, uh, use a educational campaign, if you will, uh, surrounding, uh, this, this initiative. Oh, that's great.
Council member Peterson, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. You know, and I, I appreciate all the work that's going into it, but what I find startling is in the manager's report, in the month of May, if you want to be a tree city USA, um, we've, we let, uh, 30 trees be cut down in the month of May. And there's no money raised from any of that. So the money that's been raised has been from landmark trees to be able to take those down at the homeowner's expense. So I, I think we need a lot of hard work before we go tuning our horns about anything that we do, because 30 trees in one month is way too many. Thank you.
And council member Peterson, we, we have addressed that also. Uh, permits and of that sort, uh, that, a- and, and you'll see that in the ordinance that we circulate for the next meeting.
And I appreciate that. I just was making the statement for the public to know that, how many trees go down monthly?
Council member Sage?
No, uh, the.
Okay. Well, I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. Um, and, uh, we're looking forward to that report. It should be interesting. Thank you for that. Okay, next is a report from the infrastructure committee. Council member Salvia.
I got it. Um, so from an infrastructure standpoint, we have, um, like facilities, we're in the middle of a study. We're doing the water study that council authorized to go out. Um, the purpose of the water study is to take a look at the levels of revenue that we need as a city for both of our systems, so we can fund for repairs as well as have reserves. Uh, we also are taking a look at the cost of service and then the rates themselves. So we got a first look at the results. Um, pleasantly, the, um, the analysis said, hey, we're in pretty good shape. Um, you know, we have to have some more discussion around it, and we'll be coming back in July with some, um, recommendations to council. But in general, they were very, um, positive on the work that we have done in our rates and, um, felt we were in a pretty good position. Um, overall, our goal is we want to have smooth rates. We don't want any surprises for residents in the water bills. Um, and then we also want to make sure we have funds for any emergencies that come up. So look for that in July.
Very good. Thank you. Lots of important committee work going on out there. Um, next for new business to refer on miscellaneous is reset receipt of the check register report. Um, Mr. City Treasurer, are you there?
Actually, this is one that I typically take, Mayor.
Okay.
So, um, unless there's any questions specifically, um, all this before council, uh, is the May 29th, uh, check register. And if I could jump right into my city manager updates.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Um, just had, had a few things, uh, in addition to the mayor's opening remarks. Um, I want to thank our, our city staff, especially Chief Shuttonhelp and the men and women of our police department, fire department and public works, as they've all demonstrated, uh, patience and empathy, uh, over this last week through the, uh, the various protests that we had. Um, in addition to that, um, want to, uh, highlight that, uh, our city hall, uh, we're planning on, so we're still doing, uh, um, remodeling and preparing, you know, with plexiglass and other components. Um, our staff started, uh, at city hall this week and will continue, uh, through next week. Um, we'll be announcing through our, our website and social media that the, by appointment, city hall will start to be open on the 17th of June. And, uh, then on, uh, the 6th of July, um, is our anticipated opening, uh, of the city hall. Um, barring any adjustments from the, the governor's office or a resurgence and, uh, a different direction from the public health from the county. And other than that, um, you know, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, um, uh, s- uh, m- city clerk?
Uh, just a few updates, Your Honor. Um, yesterday, Sunday evening, I sent out an updated list of boards and commissions to, for the open seats that we have. There really didn't turn out to be that many, but I'll wait for guidance from you and check back with you and city manager on how you want to handle that going forward. Um, last Friday, I sent out, um, almost 2,100, um, absentee ballot applications. That is that permanent list that you've heard a lot about, and we only had 900 on. Um, in the last year, it's grown to 2,100, and I expect that that's gonna double, if not triple, by the time this year is done. So that's gonna impact you city council members when you run next year, because you know how you get those lists. And it's, it's gonna be big. And then, uh, today I submitted our, um, reimbursement request for the, uh, March elec- 10th, um, election, and we'll be getting back about $11,000 from that.
Excellent. Okay, um, Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
Um, Nick, to over the place, chief?
Yeah, I would just say, um, I can't believe anybody has the sense from here. I'm looking out the window of the conference room at the brand new, they look like the US Open tennis courts that are ready for you to hit the first ball at. And I think the public's gonna love them. It took a while, but it's, they're like brand new, and these guys fixed the cracks, set the poles, so we don't have to worry about the water underneath the tennis courts next year, resurfaced them all. Christine, you'll, you'll be very impressed, and I think the community's ready to go, and we're ready to go.
Very good. I think, uh, I think the rah rah tennis tournament, the end of July will probably, assuming it, assuming it goes, uh, it'll, it'll be a great event.
It will be.
Uh, chief, any, with anything to add on the weekend's, uh, activities?
Uh, no, I'd just like to, uh, compliment, uh, all those that participated. Uh, I think it was, uh, a great show, uh, the ability of people to have their voices heard. And it was, uh, our pleasure to assist them, to make sure that that was done peacefully and safely. Uh, I also appreciated all the support, uh, that we received, both, uh, through social media and also in person. There were a number of people that were very complimentary, uh, of the officers in their service, uh, this weekend. And we certainly appreciate that during these, uh, challenging times. Uh, it is important to note, uh, Uh, it is important to note, uh, you know, that, um, you know, the officers certainly stand by their, uh, commitment to make sure that, uh, violence and police brutality has no place in the Rochester Police Department. And it's, uh, certainly our efforts to strive to do what we can, uh, here and to make sure that people have confidence in their police department.
Thank you. And pro, and probably, you know, I know the county and a, a councilmember Salvi, Salvi and I, uh, corresponded. The, you know, the county is looking, you know, constantly reviewing their practices, and, you know, that's probably something we should, you know, do, and I'm sure you're doing it as well, but, you know, on an ongoing basis, just make sure our policies are, um, you know, up to date that, you know, where we are, where we want to be. So, I mean, I don't think we have any issues, but it probably doesn't hurt to continually review that kind of thing.
Those are things that we do continually as well.
Right. Very good. Uh, councilmember Albrecht, anything?
Uh, just two things. One, they say a picture is worth a thousand words. I thought the picture of the Rochester Police Department with the signs standing in front of, uh, city hall or the police station was, was amazing, and I think it set a message to the four planned marches that we are a welcoming city. Uh, we welcome diversity and, and, and welcome the protesters. So again, as I commented, oftentimes on Facebook, I salute both the, uh, uh, our police, uh, department and, and the marchers who acted with dignity, respect, and, and got their message across. And then on a lighter note, um, I was number thirty-nine going into the farmer's market on opening day. I know that because Christie was counting people off with her team to make sure we all had social distance and, and were properly, uh, you know, as you left, another person could come in. So, uh, it was great to have the farmer's market open again. It's just like another sign that we're getting back to normal. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Councilmember Sage?
Uh, just one thing this evening, sir. Um, a reminder that Sunday, June fourteenth is Flag Day. So if you display a flag, please take inventory, and if, uh, your flag needs to be replaced, do so. Um, proper disposal can be, uh, accommodated through, uh, the, uh, VFW, Elks, American Legion, or Knights of Columbus.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Keith Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Chief, thank you for the thoughtful comments at the beginning of the meeting and, and just now. I think that they reflect my own sentiments on the protest that happened over the weekend. But I just want to add that I feel the frustrations of the protesters, and I support and value our local police department and believe that you're doing great work. But I also want to recognize the racial, the racial inequities that do exist and remain committed to racial justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just, um, a couple of things I, um, have already stated, but, um, a couple others are, um, I've noticed that there's some, been some, uh, partial alley improvements. And I know I spoke with Deputy City Mana, uh, City Manager Nick regarding those. Um, however, I do think that we should be looking at, um, a bigger picture when these, uh, for the planning commission or the city administration, now that it doesn't go to planning commission anymore, of how some of these houses are being built out to the zero lot lines. And then they're wanting things done to where it kind of just doesn't fit, uh, some of these back alleys at the moment, um, and not taking into consideration the, um, rest of the residents on the street. So that's something I would like to see us, uh, take care of in the future. And again, I want to thank the DDA, uh, for what they're doing and their contribution, uh, to the city, um, uh, businesses to get them back up and running. I was in there, um, as they were handing out the, um, PPP, PPE from the, um, Oakland County, and many of the business owners were just very, very thankful for that. Also for the great job at the farmer's market. That was a, a good time, and it was nice to see everyone out as well, as it was stated. And, um, I also wanted to know, too, I thought at one point in time regarding the, um, building, uh, permits, um, that our payroll, some of the, um, positions that we hired were going to be, uh, paid for through the permits that, uh, we receive. And I wanted to know if there's been any loss in that, in that area since we were down for a few months. Um, I know looking at the report, we, you know, it was like eighteen thousand. So I'm not sure if that's going to affect the way I was, I understood, I was paying for some of those positions. So, uh, just wanted to, that, other than that, um, also very disappointed that, um, somebody trespassed on my property and, and stole a sign, um, over the weekend, Saturday night. So, um, I find it's very disheartening when you're trying to be the, um, a good person, care about what goes on in our community, and take care of the constituency that, um, that happens. So, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry to hear about that, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Salvia?
Yeah, so just, um, a brief, um, kind of comment on the OPC. Um, you know, it remains, um, only doing essential services currently. Um, you know, but there are, we do have a, a four-phase reopening plan there, and the OPC staff has done a great job going through virtually every activity, every class, every, everything that goes on in that wonderful facility. And so the, the next phase that will open will be outdoor activities. So that's called like phase point oh-five, and they're looking at possibly using a tent to start doing, you know, maybe some outdoor programming, some, you know, yoga, tai chi, things like that. But then it'll move to phase one, phase two, phase three, like we've seen through, you know, many other businesses or other organizations. But obviously, you know, things like, um, you know, phase three is going to be very, uh, it's going to take some time to get to phase three. So everyone, you know, be patient. We want to make sure everyone is safe there, but there is a very detailed plan that the OPC is working through.
Thank you. And I know that's, uh, that's a very, uh, uh, Councilmember Sage?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Salvia, I've, I've actually gotten some inquiries about that. So maybe we're gonna post that on the city web as far as the, uh, potential phasing and what it means.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, well, we don't have dates, um, but I think we could, I'll talk to the OPC board about posting it and making that public information in terms of, you know, phase one includes things like book club and computer club, where you can maintain distancing, but, um, you know, congregate meals, that doesn't take place till phase two. So I, I do think the information would be helpful to people to know that there is a plan versus we're not open, right?
Agreed. Thank you.
And that's such a tough one, because the OPC is such an important organization, but of course, that's the most vulnerable population. So you've got, it's a very difficult, uh, situation.
Yep.
So thank you for that. Uh, Mayor Protem Bavakwa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of little things. Um, I know I'm repeating what some other folks here have said tonight, but, uh, want to make sure that I say it myself and say it publicly, that I, I couldn't be happier with the way that the, uh, Rochester Police Department interacted and, and, and the rest of our administration, uh, interacted and communicated with, uh, the protesters and, uh, the residents of our community, um, over the weekend. It was, uh, it was a wonderful thing to see, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do. Um, also wanted to, uh, kind of give a shout out to, uh, the youth in our area that, that came from the high schools. Um, it got involved and civically engaged in a safe and responsible manner. Um, it, it's nice to see so many people, uh, paying attention and just, uh, safely, uh, putting their voices out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't think there's any, um, outside, uh, public comments. Um, so I'll just, I'll, I'll just end. Um, I was, I also was at the farmer's market, and I thought it, it went very well. People were very respectful. Almost everybody had masks on and kept their social distance. So I thought that was really important to show that we could offer, you know, great events, but we're also safe and people feel comfortable. I think as, you know, community leaders, we need to continue to emphasize, uh, proper social distancing. You know, now that the weather's nice, I think we all want to forget about it and just act like it's not there anymore, but I think we also need to remember, uh, that it is there. And so the more we can do, the better. And then finally, a lot of questions I get about, um, our meetings. Are they going to stay virtual? And for now, um, all the meetings for the city are going to stay virtual, but the city manager and I are continuing to, um, discuss it. And then, you know, we will continue to, you know, bring that up to the council. But, uh, as of now, you know, the city's gonna maintain, uh, virtual meetings until we, you know, get more of a all-clear from the county and, and, and things like that. So, um, about any further questions? Thank you, everybody. Uh, stay safe, enjoy the, it's still early enough to enjoy the evening, and we'll see you guys all next time. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.
Night, everybody. Bye.